The date is May 12, 2022. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let us know. This meeting of the ZBA is being conducted remotely in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. And then you have to punch in the conference ID number, which is 299-754-848, and then hit the pound. Or you can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue slash hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. First, we'll have a roll call of all members to authorize this hybrid form of meeting. Please give your name and either yes or no. Buck?
James M. Upson, yes.
Bill?
William Grau, yes.
Megan?
Megan Story, yes.
All C. Simple, yes.
Randy?
Randy Partash, yes.
Dave?
David H. Veach, yes.
And I'm David S. Nixon, and I vote yes, too. I might say that citizens and non-board members participating in the call via the phone, we need to have your name, please, and the last four digits of your phone number for ID purposes. The way we conduct the meeting is as follows. First of all, the hearing notice is read by the lady to my right. This is Sarah B. Clark. She is the PPO for the town. That's the Principal Permitting Officer. She's also the Executive Secretary of the Board and of the HBDC. Then the representative or the individual will present the appeal or the application. Following their conclusion, then I would ask for anybody either here or in Microsoft Teams or anywhere who wishes to speak in favor of the appeal to do so. Following that, I would read any and all correspondence that have been sent in, whether it be Pro-Con. When that's done, I would ask that anybody who wishes to speak against the appeal or has a specific question to do so. The applicant may rebut testimony at that point. Then we would have direct questions from the board members to anyone present who had participated in the above discussion. When we were done with that, we would close the public hearing and go into deliberation. The deliberation is open only to members of the board unless a specific member of the board asks for input from an individual. When we're done, we would vote, hopefully, on the appeal or the application. And the call with the Massachusetts, you need to have a supermajority be successful. In our case, we have five votes. That means that you need to get four in favor to be successful. Three does not do it. Voting today would be Buck, Megan, Paul, Dave Veach, and myself. All votes are taken by roll call because of this hybrid form of meeting. It's kind of a pain in the neck, but we have to do it that way. Are there any questions? First, we'll have approval or lack thereof of the minutes from our last meeting. Paul?
I'll move approval of the minutes of April 28, 2022.
Dave Veach seconds.
All right, we need a roll call vote on that. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Megan?
Megan votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave?
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. Sarah? 22-029, please.
Application number 22-029, Gordon and Susan Melville, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 71 Eldridge Square, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 14F Block 42, Lot ME4. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of additions. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 17.9 feet from Eldridge Square and 24.3 feet from Surrey Lane. The proposed additions will be non-conforming, and that they will be located 22.1 feet from Surrey Lane where a 25-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,429 square feet, 17.7 percent, and the proposed building coverage is 1,668 square feet, 20.7 percent, where 15 percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and then it contains 8,055 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Litch?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Bill Litchfield here in behalf of Gordon and Susan Melville, who have owned this house at the corner of Eldridge Square and Surrey Lane for almost 20 years now, and they would like to make some fairly modest changes to it to expand what is the only single-story house in the neighborhood by putting a partial second story on it and below that an addition of 238 square feet. An addition on the Surrey Lane side, most of which is a covered porch, or much of which is a covered porch. And as a result of that, as shown there, there will be a slight two-foot expansion to the north toward Surrey Lane. What is there now is a small, single-story ranch with a footprint of some 1,400 square feet, 1,100 square feet of living area. And what they propose to do is to add a second story above the existing footprint, as shown there, a reasonably, I think, very attractive cape done by Mark Zebraught, who grew up at the other end of Surrey Lane, realizing my age when I realized that, recognized that I knew both Henry and Millard Eldridge, for whom Eldridge Square is named, but I didn't ride in a Surrey, so I'm not quite that old. To go into the criteria, I think you can find the site to be adequate for the existing home, certainly, which was built under prior zoning, actually, the neighborhood was developed before zoning, not before the existing non-conformities. If you approve the special permit, you can do so based on a finding that the site is adequate, excuse me, for the 238-square-foot addition on the second story above with that small expansion on the north side as to compatibility of size with the neighborhood. On the third page of the handout that you have, you will note that all of the adjacent lots which were created before zoning are non-conforming. The existing house with a footprint, as I said, of 1,400 square feet is the second smallest in the neighborhood. If you approve the expansion and the special permit, it will remain compatible. It will still be smaller than some houses in the neighborhood. It is, as I said, a modest expansion of the footprint, and it's consistent with and supported by, as the chair will read later, several neighbors. And again, it's the only home in the immediate area which doesn't have at least a half-story above. As to the extended increase in non-conformity, we have the coverage increase as noted and the two feet toward Surrey Lane, but I don't think you could find either to be substantially more detrimental. As to suitability of the site, it has been suitable for residential use for the past 60 years since the house was built. There are no change there, no Conservation Commission jurisdiction. As to scale, seating, mass, views, and vistas, what is there now is a fairly simple post-war quasi-ranch. It is without particular benefit to the streetscape, and I think what Mark Zebraught has designed here is an attractive cape with a traditional dormer at the rear. It steps back as it goes to the rear, as Cape houses do, has a more appropriate pitch to the roof, and I think it will have an absolutely positive impact on streetscape. As to compatibility of use, there is no change. It's a residential use which will continue. Adequacy of sewer and water, we have town water and a septic, Title V septic system. The health agent has indicated, having reviewed the plans, that she has no concerns because there's no additional bedrooms. The other criteria, impact on traffic flow and safety, noise, and litter, adequacy of utilities are not at issue. What is at issue is, as you know, the question of whether the proposed change is substantially more detrimental of the neighborhood. We have, again, a modest increase in the footprint and a partial second story. It's not a full two-story, but a story and three-quarters, or whatever you want to call it, in that I think you can find not to be substantially more detrimental. The house will remain modest and appropriate. It's compatible as to size, whether measured by gross floor area or living area, and actually adding a second story makes it more compatible with the neighborhood and is an architectural improvement. So based on the criteria and the plans and the bylaw, I think you can find that this proposed addition on this house in this neighborhood is not substantially more detrimental. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Litchfield. Is there anyone here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this appeal? If so, please raise your hand if you're here or indicate on the screen so that Sarah can introduce you into the meeting.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor of the application.
I'll read the correspondence. First is from Judith Giorgio, health agent for the Town of Chatham. She writes on May 10th, "I have reviewed the plans for additions at this property. The plan does not add any septic flow to the property, nor does it encroach on the existing septic. I have no concerns." Then this is a letter from Peter and Mary Schlock, S-C-H-O-C-K, and they write on May 10th from 17 Surrey Lane. "We live across the street from the Melvilles. We have no objection to the project of renovating their home. It is in keeping with the architectural throughout the neighborhood. Gordon and Sue have been wonderful neighbors. Please approve the article." Then we have a letter. This is from Mary and Jim Sullivan, and they are at 16 Surrey Lane. They write on May 4th. "My wife, Mary, and I live year-round at 16 Surrey Lane, adjacent to the Melvilles home at 71 Eldridge Square. We enthusiastically support their petition for a special permit to allow for the expansion of their home. We have known Gordon and Sue since they bought their house and have shared many great times watching our children grow up together during their summers in Chatham, both in the neighborhood and on the water and around Stage Harbor. Now that our children are grown and we find ourselves winding down our careers, we look forward to spending as much time as possible in Chatham and sharing our community with grandchildren. Gordon and Sue's planned renovations and expansion will give them the space needed to host the next generation of their family for summer vacations, as well as give them the space necessary to reconfigure their home to better support year-round living. Our entire neighborhood is made up of non-conforming lots as it was subdivided before the current R20 zoning district was established. Their proposed addition is fully consistent with the size of the surrounding properties and will only improve our neighborhood. We strongly urge the board to vote in support." Now we have an email. This is from Robin and Daniel DeCarlo. They write on May 2nd, "As owners and residents of 74 Eldridge Square, we are in full support of the proposed size and design of the addition and alteration plans before the board for Susan and Gordon." Then we have another email. This is from Scott Anderson, 26 Surrey Lane. He writes on April 25th, "My name is Scott Anderson. I'm the property owner of 26 Surrey Lane. My wife, Brooke, and I wholeheartedly support the application or expansion of 71 Eldridge Square. As one of the closest neighbors to this property, I hope our overwhelming support is heard by the Chatham zoning board of appeals." That's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to either speak against this application or has a specific question? If so, please indicate on the screen so that Sarah can pick you up.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay, we'll have questions from the board. We'll start with Randy.
I have no questions.
Dave Veach?
I have no questions.
Buck?
So I have a couple of questions, Bill. In the bylaw, page 98 or 92, depending on which you count by, the coverage is for houses or lots under 30,000. It's 15 percent maximum coverage or maximum 2,800. In this particular case, I believe it pertains to the 15 percent.
Correct.
And you did mention in your introduction that the houses were built before the zoning. Has the zoning in that area, which is, I guess, R40, has it always been 15 percent coverage?
I do not know.
Oh. Well, then, I was hoping you could verify something I heard. I had heard that in the town meeting of 1994, the original coverage calculation was 25 percent, and they reduced it to 15. That's, I'm not sure it's excessive or substantial, but it certainly isn't a modest reduction.
It certainly was a change that zoning, well, the sliding scale provision that you mentioned is relatively recent. I honestly cannot recall because there have been so many changes over the years. I'll be brief, but this, the Eldred subdivision was done pre-zoning. It was when zoning was imposed in 1954, this neighborhood was R10. I think it became R20, and in 1984, it became R40. And I don't know what the coverage limitations were in each of those three iterations.
All right, I don't want to pull labor, and I just, I wanted to...
25 percent. You know, someone who's been practicing for decades longer than I, in the case that 25 percent was the correct number.
Okay, so when I'm looking at page three of your handout, where you have lot size, footprint, coverage, gross floor, and living area, am I correct that the only, the only one, the only column here that's covered or addressed in the bylaw is coverage? Gross floor area and living area are not...
They are not addressed in...
That's not in our purview.
They are not in our bylaw. They are useful, I think, for you to be able to compare the size of houses and degree of increase. We don't have a gross floor area requirement as some municipalities do.
So when I look at column number three, coverage, and I look at the existing house at 71 Eldridge Square, it's at 18, well, 17.7...
Correct.
Already over the 15 percent. But I draw your attention to 47, 63, 66, 74, and 84. There's nine houses here on this list. Over half are smaller coverage than our, than our existing situation. So my question is, and I do agree with you, it's a beautiful design. It, you know, the Zebraught, Mr. Zebraught did a wonderful, it's charming, there's, I can find nothing wrong with it. I agree with this statement that I've heard many times. Is it an improvement to the neighborhood, et cetera, substantially more detrimental? My question is, at what point are we, at what point is the zoning board supposed to look at coverage? Can they put 30 percent on that lot if they thought the house was not detrimental?
There are, frankly, the answer is yes. In the Old Village, which is completely non-conforming, we have tiny lots which are almost completely covered by structures. I don't think any of us thinks that the Old Village is by itself detrimental at all. In fact, it's quite charming, international registered district, et cetera. One of the difficulties with numbers is that the percentage calculation is problematic. It's based, of course, on lot size. All of these lots look to be about the same size, but some of them are 8,500 square feet and some are in the 13,000 square feet. So a house of the same size on a different lot, which would have a different coverage calculation. If you look at the absolute footprint, the physical size of the house, this house is the second smallest of the neighborhood. It's got a footprint of 1,400 square feet. There is one smaller. Some of them range up to 2,200, several are in the 1,900 range, but they all look approximately the same looking, driving down the street. So I understand your point. Is there a limit? There is, and the limit is when the proposed change is deemed by you to be substantially more detrimental.
One last question. So why did the town go to such great lengths to change it from 25 to 15?
The new zoning is always forward-looking. Unfortunately, however, it has to be retrofitted onto existing statutes or existing properties, which is why the general laws, as does our bylaw, make provisions for pre-existing lots. For instance, there were those who thought, when the largest subdivision in town was River Bay, which was developed under 20,000-square-foot zoning, there were a lot of people who thought that the zoning, some people, who thought that the zoning in that neighborhood should have been changed before the houses were built, before the subdivision was created to one-acre zoning. Other people argued, no, so it's 20,000-square-foot zoning. Had that been done, the neighborhood would be different, the houses would be different. Eldridge Square, having been developed in the '50s, exists under prior rules and the statute, and I guess if legality and morality go hand in hand, sometimes they do, the rationale is that if you bought something based on a particular set of rules and a particular lot size, you not be, you ought not lose certain rights by fiat, which is why we have a board of appeals process.
I'm all done.
Bill?
No questions.
Megan?
No questions.
Paul?
All done? I doubt that. We have a long hearing to go yet. I have no questions.
Sarah has pointed out there is someone.
He lowered his hand.
Oh, he lowered his hand, okay, there is no longer someone. All right.
Okay, I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds.
That needs a roll call vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Megan?
Megan votes yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Dave?
Dave votes yes.
I vote yes. Dave, deliberation?
Certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It meets all of our criteria. It's a really, I don't know, you know, in that neighborhood, I, it's a really nice neighborhood. It's sweet, it's a sweet neighborhood, and I, this will fit in perfectly and actually be an improvement for the property, so I will support it.
Buck?
So I can go either way on this. I heard Mr. Litchfield answer three questions way above my pay grade, but I think I got the gist of it. I'm just, I am, I am a little puzzled by why they lowered it from 25 to 15. I heard the River View, River Bay story, and I think it's now R60. So it seems like it's been all over the map. So I, you know, that, you know, and people that bought it, R20, and then 40, and then 60, I don't know which way to go. It is a very nice design, but I'll turn it over to other wiser people.
Bill?
Well, I actually had similar questions that Buck brought up about the coverage until I actually went out there and, you know, looked at the house and looked at the lot, and it is, excuse me, a much smaller lot to me than most of the other ones in the neighborhood. And, you know, given the design and given the, what I think is a really nice job by the architect to fit, you know, to fit into the neighborhood, I wouldn't have any issues with this application at all if I were voting.
Megan?
I'm on the same page as Bill.
Paul?
Yeah, I think Buck's questions are good because they educate us all in what we're doing, but overall, I look at it and I think, yes, this is compatible to the neighborhood as you look at it, and it fits in, and it certainly is not substantially more detrimental, so I'll be voting in favor.
Randy?
If I were voting, I would support it for all reasons that have been said, and I also want to add that despite my lack of experience, I've only been on the want to add that despite my lack of experience, I've only been on this panel for one year, people have asked me, I don't know why, they're asking me, that same question that you just answered, is there a limit to the amount of coverage? And I thought that it was what you said, and so I'm glad that you reinforced that, because I think it's a great question. Thank you.
This is not substantially more detrimental. I'll certainly be voting in favor of it. Okay. Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I guess I will ask, are there any conditions that we need to consider, Bill, given the neighborhood and when they plan to construct? I don't know that we have actual construction timetable now, but I think we could accept a Labor Day June limitation or June to Labor Day limitation if need be. And we would certainly keep all vehicles on property or adjacent properties and not block the street. All right. In that case, then, I will move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, and that between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction would be allowed, no work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave Veach seconds.
Okay, that takes a roll call vote. Buck?
Commissioner Brown had a question.
I would only say, when I was out there, I met the owner. He was there. And he told me that they, if they weren't, had no plans at all to start anything until after Labor Day. Just thought I'd add that.
Seeing that it has unanimous support from everybody else, I'll put in a no vote.
Megan?
Megan votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Dave? Veach votes yes.
I vote yes. So that's a successful vote, four to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Litchfield. Okay, Sarah, 22-032, please.
Application number 22-032, All Real Estate Trust, care of Donnie Dunham, 42 Wiano Avenue, number 1164, Ostrville, Mass. 02655. Owners of property located at 37 Clamshell Drive, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 16A, Block 29, Lot H76. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and that it is located 8.8 feet from the road, 11.6 feet from the northerly butter, 15.8 feet from the westerly butter, and entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District floodplain elevation 13. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be located 8.1 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required, 12.1 feet from the northerly butter, 2.8 feet from the westerly butter where a 25-foot setback is required, and entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. Also proposed is the installation of a driveway as allowed by special permit under Section 4A 3D of the protective bylaw. The existing building coverage is 811 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 860 square feet, where 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains zero square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required, and contains 5,674 square feet of land area where 40,000 square feet is required in the R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 9, and Section 5B and 8D 2B of the protective bylaw.
Is Mr. Dunham here?
I'm on it. Donnie Dunham, DeMartin Dunhamville.
Do we know what's wrong?
Can you hear me okay?
We can now, but you are breaking apart a little bit.
Okay. I'm going out.
That's good. The floor is yours, Mr. Dunham.
Okay, thank you. So Steve Clark is also on from Clark Engineers.
He needs to stay next to the phone or something.
Yep.
Yeah, you have...
You need to stay, like, right next to the phone or the mic, because otherwise it breaks up.
Okay. I'm going out. Maybe I should call in instead of being on Teams?
Well, that right, just, just right there, if you don't move at all, it'd probably be fine.
Okay.
Well, this isn't going to work.
Can I call in?
Yes.
Yeah, Donnie, if you call in, stay on Teams, because I will be sharing my screen with the plans.
Okay.
But just make sure you mute yourself on Teams.
Okay, will do.
Does he call in? He directs.
Can the board hear me now?
Yes.
You also need to turn off your speakers on your Teams computer, please. Okay. Okay, does that work?
Yes, that's good.
Okay. Sorry about that, Ford. So to start over, so my name is Donnie Dunham of DeMartin Dunham Builders, representing the All Real Estate Trust to raise and rebuild the three-bedroom, single-family dwelling at 37 Clamshell Drive in Chatham. The, the home is, the existing home is located in the R-40 zoning district, and the existing dwelling is 811 square feet. The proposed dwelling will be 860 square feet in an area where the max building coverage is 2,800 square feet. The home has been repositioned on the lot from its existing footprint due to parking constraints with the existing drive. As noted in the special permit, the proposed drive will be in the northern, northerly part of the lot, which will access a single-car garage underneath the new home. And the other piece of that, in, in considering the design of the proposed drive, is there's an existing Title V septic system that will remain on the property as it passes Title V. So the restrictions around designing the new home was restrictive to the, the existing Title V being a raised system that's on the southerly part of the lot. Additionally, as far as parking, we explored the idea of putting parking south of the septic area. However, there's a neighbor that's adjacent to 37 Clamshell, and their entire driveway is actually within the 37 Clamshell lot. So that's, that's the reasoning for the proposed drive on the opposite side of the property, which I know was a couple of the questions that have been, been noted by neighbors as well as the planning board. The planning board made a recommendation to ensure that the proposed drive is made of a permeable material, which it will be, to unobstruct any water flow. Yeah, I can answer any questions? That would be great.
Well, I think, I think it's time you went through the criteria.
Okay. So, so criteria of, as far as the special permit. So the special permit is, is to raise and rebuild the existing home, as it's also in a FEMA district, and the new home will be at elevation 14. The criteria is that the maximum building coverage is at 2,800 square feet, and we have fallen within the criteria of staying below that. Yep. Were there specific questions pertaining to the criteria of the special permit?
I think you need to go through all of the criteria. Our questions would come later.
Oh, okay.
So I'm sure you have the list in front of you. So you read the criteria and explain to us why you think it fits.
Yep. So the criteria is whether or not this new home would be more detrimental to the neighborhood, and we believe that this will be, will not be less detriment, will not be more detrimental to the existing neighborhood, as the new design of this home is also a Cape-style cottage, and it does fit within the criteria of not being detrimental to, to the surrounding homes. As well as fitting in the criteria around lot coverage, et cetera. The, the lot is an existing non-conforming lot, similar to other lots in the neighborhood. The, the, there have been two other homes that have been in the same condition in scallop lane that have also been raised and rebuilt. And yeah, if you, I'm happy to answer any questions specific around the design and the criteria of it being, not being any more detrimental to the neighborhood of this new home that's proposed.
So, Donnie, on the screen, I put up the 12 criteria that you have to speak to, and that's the criteria that the board has to make their determination based on.
So we need, we need to have you go through each one of them, okay?
Yep. Yep. Okay. So the adequacy, adequacy of the size of the site, the size of the site is 5,500 square feet, so we're not, we're, our maximum lot coverage is, is 2,800 square feet. We're well within that building coverage of the proposed dwelling being 860 square feet. The compatibility and the size of the proposed structure is similar to structures that are adjacent in the neighborhood, 237 Clamshell Drive. There are a few on Morris, two on Morris Island that have been built across the street that are the same height, scale, massing, and size. As far as suitability to neighboring properties in the environment of slopes, vegetation, and wetlands, we have met with conservation and exceeded the requirement pertaining to any specific mitigation plan in vegetation that needs to be replicated. Storm runoff will not be impacted as if, as, as explained previously. Any sort of landscaping will be permeable with the stone driveways. Mass and scale of the, the structure, it will be an 800-square-foot structure, two-story, single-family dwelling that will essentially be in the same, within the same footprint of, of what's there slightly turned to accommodate that driveway. The, there was one question that came up about the potential kupla on the elevations, if you have those plans, that the kupla will actually not be constructed as we want to be conscious of, of the neighborhood and of the, the scaling, even though the kupla does not meet, or does not, is not impacted by a height restriction. We just want to be considerate of the neighbors, so that won't be completed. The streetscapes, the, the other piece of the, the street aspect of it is that we're trying our best to, by twisting the home, shifting it back slightly to keep cars that are off the street, so, so really not impacting the neighborhood and, and blocking the 20-foot-wide, single-lane road. You know, there's very limited access if you bend out Clamshell Drive. It's, it's, it's essentially a one-way. You know, you can only fit one car back and forth. So it's, it was important to try to make sure that we keep the cars off the road. The proposed use will continue to be a residential use, consistent with, with what it is now. Sewage disposal, there was a comment by the Board of Health, we are going to present that connection with our building permit application. Impact on traffic flow and safety, back to the, the driveway, by, by creating this driveway into the new garage, we can keep the cars off of the street, one in, one in the garage, and then if there's a guest that's parked, the car won't be sticking into the street. The existing driveway has, it, it's so short that even if your car is, is close to the septic wall, it's, your car basically hangs out into the street. So that, that definitely would impact how traffic flow is. And then another safety piece is, there's a primary wire that services the neighborhood that we've spoken to Eversource about that would be pretty close to the new house. Therefore, that was another reason for trying to pull the house back, center the house essentially on the lot, along with the septic system. Noise and litter, I, we don't plan to plant any construction until after Labor Day. Adequacy of the utilities, Title V septic system will remain. There's town water there as well. And the visual impact on the neighborhood, it's very similar to some surrounding homes, and it'll be raised, you know, two stories with staying in the, the height restriction. The building itself will be approximately 29 feet from the slab, with the adjacent grade being six feet. So we'll be overall at 35 feet with a maximum of 36. And then for the FEMA criteria, there will be floodgates within the dwelling that will be adequate at the below floodplain level to support any sort of flood. Happy to answer any questions, but I apologize for all of the technologization.
That would be your presentation, is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Is there anyone here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
Okay, I'll read the correspondence. First of all, we have a note from Crystal Keon, and she is the Conservation Secretary for the town. She writes, on May 12th, "The project has been approved and will be issued an OOC on May 5th." And we have a memo. This is from Judith Giorgio, health agent for the town. She writes, "On May 10th, I've reviewed the demolish and rebuild plan. The plan does not appear to add any septic flow. An existing floor plan is required for review. Detailed site plans showing offset to the existing septic system will be required pri- Detailed site plans showing offset to the existing septic system will be required prior to approval for a building permit." And then we have a note, this is from Catherine Halpern, she's the Planning Board Chair. She writes, "On April 28th, the Planning Board at their April 25th meeting reviewed the ZBA's request for comment on 37 Clamshell Drive. After review of this request, the board voted 5-0-0 to send a positive recommendation with the condition that the driveway shall be constructed of a permeable material and shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. The board requires that the area noted on the plan as existing driveway, paved driveway, must be removed and must be converted to a flat area of indeterminate use covered by grass or permeable material." And then we have a note, this is from Michelle Clark. She writes, "On May 10th," she's writing for the Historical Commission, "The applicant was before the Historical Commission on May 3rd proposing a full demolition of the existing structure. The Commission determined that the structure is not historically significant and therefore did not impose a demolition delay on the proposed demolition." Then we have a letter from Peter and Susan McConnell. I noticed they are here in the audience. Is this something in addition to your presentation or will this be covered by your presentation?
I think most of it.
I mean, I'd be happy to read it if you wish, but...
Please.
Okay. This was written on May 11th. "We are writing to object to several aspects of the proposed dwelling at 37 Clamshell. We live at 191 Morris Island Road and are direct abutters to the proposed project on the north and west sides. The height, scale, and mass of the project are not in keeping with the neighborhood. The neighborhood is a mix of summer cottages and dwellings that have been lifted to meet the base flood elevation and converted to more substantial homes. The other projects in the neighborhood have stayed substantially on the original footprint and have constructed dwellings of a story and a half. The proposed project at 37 is a full two stories above the base flood elevation and has moved substantially off its original footprint. The proposal increases the footprint from 811 square feet to 860 and moves the dwelling significantly closer to the westerly property line. Existing dwelling is in excess of 20 feet off the westerly property line. The proposed dwelling is 10.7 feet off the westerly property line. The proposed second-story balcony is 2.8 feet off the westerly property line and the proposed mechanicals platform is five feet off the westerly property line. By moving the dwelling westerly and adding a balcony, a mechanical platform, the proposed dwelling significantly increases the nonconformity of the setbacks and significantly impacts our living space and our views and vistas. Raising the dwelling will completely block our water views from the second-floor master bedroom. We accept that since raising the house is desirable. Moving the dwelling westerly partially blocks our water view from the rest of the second floor. We would like that not to happen. It would appear that the part of the reason to move the house back is to accommodate a new driveway and more parking. Additional parking is not necessary. Our patio is 12 feet from the proposed generator and AC platform, which is eight feet above slab. The Chatham Bylaw requires that the mechanicals be set back 25 feet from the property line. The proposal is to set the mechanicals half that distance from the northerly property line. We request that the placement of the mechanicals be 25 feet from the property line. The lot on which the proposal is to be built is a small 5,674 square feet. The proposal increases the footprint from 811 to 860, thereby exceeding 15% of the lot size. The proposal adds 10% more covers to the lot. The size of the lot is not adequate to handle these increases. We are in no way against raising the existing dwelling and constructing a new dwelling that is FEMA compliant. However, we believe that the new dwelling should be built on the existing footprint. The existing nonconforming setbacks should not be increased and the placement of mechanicals should comply with the current bylaw." Now, we have a letter dated May 10th. This is from Charles and Ann Shuey, 32 Clamshell Drive. "We are writing in reference to this application. While we embrace the right of property owners to enhance their property and the attendant value of it, we have reviewed the building plans with respect of the application and offer the following for consideration. Our property of 32 Clamshell is across the road from the existing cottage of 37. Our view is westerly from our front and in 2014, we built a sizable roof deck, including a spiral staircase, that is set just below our roof peak. The purpose of this addition was to allow our and our guests enjoyment of the sunsets. The placement of this deck in no way diminishes any of the property owner's view of the water or the sunsets. The cost of this improvement was sizable. We believe the proposed new structure in the above application will undoubtedly reduce the quality of our sunset view. We understand that there are a number of new replacement residents in our cottage community. The plans for the new structure of 37 Clamshell show that the height will be raised to almost 35.3 feet with an additional increase if the kupla were added. If the design were changed to the use of dormers on the second floor as the rising structure on Oyster Drive, the roof ridge would be lower and the height of the structure would be reduced and our view less compromised. Further, the height of the first floor in this structure is 14 feet where normal room height is eight feet. This too adds to the height of the structure. When the board considers the requirement of numbers 1 to 6 of Section 5B of the bylaw, it seems that the proposal for 37 is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwelling. The proposed building would not be in keeping with the neighborhood feel of the Horns Cottage community that we have been residents of for over 40 years. We only wish that some accommodations to maintain our view be incorporated into the plans. We also request that the new construction be conforming to the, quote, "impact of scale, sighting, and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes." And that's the extent of the correspondence. So, is there anyone here that would like to speak either against this or has a specific question? And also in Microsoft Teams, please indicate so that Sarah could include you into the discussion. Is there anyone here? Yes, sir.
I'm Peter McConnell. I live at 191 Morris Island Road and am a direct abutter to this property on both the side and the back of the property.
Is the mic on, Peter?
There's a green light.
It's, okay, good.
Is that better?
Yeah, much better. Thank you.
So, basically, I have four issues with the proposal. First and foremost is the moving of the house somewhere between six and eight feet back. My dwelling, which is next to it, has all of the living area, the living room, the sliders, the deck, the patio on that end of the house. And by pushing the house back five or six feet, six or seven feet actually, not only does it get very close to the back line, but it begins to impede the views that I have and the privacy that I have there. So, and I've tried a couple of times to discuss with, or to register my feelings with the owner. And basically, what I got was, what I heard today was that it's for parking. And I really don't think adding a parking space is a compelling issue to move the building to within five feet of the lot line and the deck, second-story balcony, to within 2.8 feet of the lot line. I think that's really pushing it for the purpose of getting a parking space. I have been on Clamshell Way for 40 years and there has never been an issue of people parking in the roadway. So, I think whatever it is, we've not had people parking in the roadway. The roadway has not been impeded. So, I would ask you to, please, whatever is approved, please keep it substantially on the footprint. Obviously, it doesn't have to stay exactly on the footprint. But if it could be not moving back, because it comes back six or seven feet, and then added to that six or seven feet is my next objection, which is the raised platform of the generator and air conditioning. That is on the corner of the house that is closest to my living room. So, it's right there on the living. It's going to be, and I can't calculate it because I'm not an engineer, but it's going to be fairly high off the ground since the first story, I believe, has got to be 13 feet. So, this air conditioning generator and air conditioning box is going to be right there. And as you move further back, it gets further and further in front of my living room. So, I think that they have an obligation to put that in a place that is less offensive to the neighbors. Maybe it would have to be more offensive to them, but I think it is unfair for them to put the air conditioning box, even though they put up a privacy fence, the air conditioning and generator box right next to, basically, our living room. My third issue is the second-story balcony. By pushing the lot, the house back and adding this second-story balcony that's almost eight by 12, that comes within 2.8 feet of the lot line. Now, granted, the lot line is the back of the house. There's probably never going to be anything built back there. I do own it, or my wife and I own it. But I think that it is really pushing it to take a house that's 15 or 20 feet from the lot line, add a balcony, push the house back five to eight feet, and get within 2.8 feet of the lot line. And my last issue, and it's pretty major, is the actual design of the house. When houses started going up in the Little Beach area, you know, I wrote a couple of letters and I looked and said, "Oh, boy, this is not that great." But as it's happening, they're okay. And every one of them has been a story and a half. They're a Cape-style house with dormers, some bigger dormers, some smaller dormers, and one Gable-style house, I guess. But most of them, the three that are basically up or under construction, or three of them, are story and a half. So, they do have the FEMA-compliant foundation and then a story and a half above that using dormers. This house has three complete floors, including from the slab up, straight walls up. So, it's going to seem, or it does seem to me, that it's massive. I mean, we have four sides that are the foundation of 13 feet above sea level, I guess, then another floor and another floor straight up and a less pitched roof. I don't think the design fits in the neighborhood. I think the ones who have gone up previously have tried hard to make them compatible with the other houses that are in the neighborhood. And I think if you look at this one, the scale, the mass, the height, the size, it's in my opinion is overdone for the neighborhood. And I would request that you don't approve the plan as it is presented. Thank you. And if anybody has any questions about what I said.
We'll ask you later if we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the audience who would like to speak against this or has a specific question?
I don't want to meet the microphone. I have it.
Half on the mic. We're slaves to the TV. Where can I talk?
Oh, I'm sorry. Susan McConnell. I live with that guy. And I am upset about what I'm hearing about the parking. We have lived there. We raised our children there. We are now having our grandchildren on that road. There are no issues with parking. You guys have done a great job with the other new houses you put in there. You have 14 feet from the road and then there's the garage. I measured them all today and then I measured this projected one and it's 21 feet to the garage. And so, she could basically get three cars there. She also, if you looked at the stakes on her existing hardtop, has moved the stakes over, perhaps getting three cars there. So, I'm confused about parking. But we've lived there forever, so.
Thank you. Anyone else here would like to speak? Is there anyone, Sarah, on Microsoft Teams that wishes to join in the conversation?
Gail Blanchard would like to speak.
Okay. Gail Blanchard, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I also live in this neighborhood and I have a house that it was raised several years ago in compliance with what was asked and it's nowhere near what is being presented today. I want to second everything that Peter McConnell and my neighbor, Mr. Shuey, Mr. and Mrs. Shuey have said. If you were to drive down this small road, you would see that there have been four cars parked on this piece of property. And I'm not quite sure why we need another driveway. So, I guess that I'm very upset about having this sort of structure in a quaint neighborhood. And I guess I'm not for it at all. Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, is there anyone else who wishes to join the conversation?
I do not see anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay. Mr. Dunham, if you're still out there, this is at a point where you, if you wished, you would be able to make some rebuttal to the questions that have been brought up, the subjects that have been brought up, if you wish.
So, to a few of Peter's points, the rear lot, lot line where the balcony is, we are actually improving the setback. There's an existing patio with a wall that encroaches on their property that's going to be removed. So, that will reduce that setback issue. As far as the generator and the air conditioner, we feel the same about this. Our client does this well. It's difficult on a 5,000-foot lot, square-foot lot, to find a good location for a generator and for a condenser. We actually initially planned to put it on the end of the house that's closer to Peter's house and we felt as though that was too close. If we didn't have to be, if we didn't have to consider FEMA compliance as far as keeping it raised, you know, we could put it on the ground in a location that's, you know, less invasive to anybody, including the owner of 37 Clamshell. As far as the massing of the house, like I said earlier, we do not plan to do the kupla and do plan to remove that from the plans. So, for the neighbor across the street that spoke in terms of views and, or had written in as far as views, the new home is in fact 29 feet to the ridge, which is in line with the new homes that are being built in the surrounding neighborhoods. The home that's on Little Beach Road at the corner of the split, it's the same scale in massing on a tight lot and that home actually went concrete all the way up to the first-floor 14, you know, FEMA level. We tried to soften that impact with a knee-wall foundation than with conventional lumber and windows in the unfinished area of the basement slash garage parking. As far as the parking goes, just to kind of reiterate from the planning board, the existing parking that is shallow to the septic system will no longer be the driveway. That will be a permeable grass material, et cetera. So, the proposed driveway wasn't just for additional parking for 37 Clamshell, but it's also access to the garage. In our initial design, we considered having the garage opposite where it is now. However, the depth and the turning radius from Clamshell Drive was difficult to turn into it. So, really just trying to essentially use the space underneath the house to store a vehicle and then have one outside. You know, so definitely a lot of thought that went into that. And I think that kind of addresses the points that I wanted to cover.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll have questions from the board. We'll start with Buck.
Mr. McConnell, could you come back to the microphone, please? Yes, sir. Thank you very much. So, as I look at that area, it's very high density, a lot of cottages in a small area. And I suspect people that have been there as long as you were, even half as long as you've been there, have pretty good verbal communication skills. Writing negative letters in this situation and opposing it is not, it comes with great conflict because there's going to be some people that probably are still going to live there, whether they build this or something else or do nothing and stay the way it is. So, my question to you, and I'm not trying to make it a trick question, but it's going to take a little skill on your part to answer. We had, we've heard three people that aren't in love with this project. Can you say that there's more additional gossip that we're not hearing about this that have expressed to you that maybe they want to write something but decided not to? that have expressed to you that maybe they want to write something but decided not to?
I can't answer that, and I'll tell you mainly because I haven't been here since December, and I came back Tuesday. So I haven't been here, and a lot of the people there are seasonal. So I would say I have not heard that. And yes, it is very difficult to write that letter. I will say that I sent two emails to the owner to open a dialogue, basically explaining what our objections were. And the answer was basically, there's nothing we can do about it because the lot's small. So therefore, I felt that there wasn't a lot of dialogue, and I would present my letter to the board and our feelings to the board. I know it's very difficult. The lots are very small, and I know we all want more than we can get on that lot. I'm the same. But I think that despite my initial feelings, I do believe the three, or the two on Little Beach Road are going to be okay when they're done, well, one is done. I assume this one is so different. But my main objection is that for a parking space, they want to push it back into my living space. But to answer your question, I have not heard any other gossip.
Thank you very much. I have, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Dunham. Are you there, Mr. Dunham?
I am, yep.
So the first one is almost classified as a softball. What are the little rectangular squares or rectangles in the front of the house, I believe, that seem to parallel the property line? I guess it's walkway from the existing paved drive to be reconfigured or something?
Yeah, they were just steppers, like flagstones in the grass, just to be able to walk.
Okay.
Yep.
So the way this is drawn, and I thought I knew what was going on there. Your blueprint that Clark Engineering drew shows a drive in the northeast corner of the property, and it says "proposed drive" on the print, but I could have sworn that's where I parked when I went to the lot. Is that?
Yeah, so you parked in the reconfigured area when you went to the lot. However, this plan was submitted, you know, prior to meeting with the planning board pertaining to, you know, making the proposed drive the primary drive.
And I don't think, maybe I didn't word that right. The drive that I parked, the drive that I parked on, I would swear is over 12, 10, 15 years old. And it's the width of a, it's a single width, whereas the one in the middle of the lot is, two, it says existing. I saw lawn and grass, and there's nothing existing there. And my question is, it's not a proposed drive, it's an existing drive in the northeast corner of this blueprint.
So in the, so I believe, if I'm understanding correctly, I think you actually parked in the neighbor's drive.
I didn't understand that.
So where you parked, it was a single lane paved drive. That's actually the neighbor's drive, and it seems as though it's 37's drive, but it's not. It just happens to be on their lot.
Oh, well, that's, so, all right, well, we'll accept that. So normally, when we look at these applications, and you certainly have a very non-conforming situation here, one of the things we'd like to do is see a reduction in the nonconformities in both the amount and the size of them. And it looks like when you're putting that second-story balcony in the back of the house, 2.8 feet from the property line, that's more nonconforming than what we have now, isn't it?
Well, the existing property has a patio and a wall that's over the, basically, it's three feet, 3.1 feet over the lot line now. So we, by doing the balcony, we would be reducing that by about five feet net. So that space of the patio, the existing patio, would essentially be replicated by doing a new balcony, but within the lot line.
And how about on the, the size of your deck around the house is 700 square feet, 703, I guess, with stairs?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And the?
Yeah, so.
And the, the setback there, I guess you're saying is existing is 8.8 feet? Up there in the northeast corner, inside that proposed drive, it says existing 8.8.
Correct.
And it's gonna, I don't see what your, what's the setback? It's 8.1, I'm sorry, down below the middle of the print.
Yep, yep. To be able to, to be able to get a set of stairs essentially up to the living space at the front door.
I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Bill?
You're welcome.
Yeah, Mr. Dunham.
Yep.
The septic system, is that all existing now?
Yes, it is.
It's existing. So what you're proposing here is to cover a portion of the drain field and the septic tank with a deck?
Yeah, so Title V requirements, you can cover that area as long as it's accessible. So that deck will be approximately six feet above the system, you know, give or take. So there'll be much adequate access to any servicing of the D-Box, et cetera.
By having six foot of clearance to get a pump hose in there to the tank when necessary?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And six feet is a rough estimate off the top of my head.
The question, or the issue that came up about the driveway to the neighbor.
Yep.
I assume that's down in the southern part of the site, in the corner?
Yes.
Where it's shown? Okay. How long has that been there? Do you know?
I'm uncertain. It's a, it seems to be, you know, recent asphalt, but I'm not sure how long that has existed with the neighbor.
David Clark, Clark Engineering, for the record. I would imagine that driveway's been there since the cottages were all owned by the Horns.
Yeah.
So, and it's been in private ownership for 30-plus years, 40-plus years?
So was it recently paved or something?
Probably.
Yeah.
Am I not understanding that that driveway is on this piece of property?
Yes, it is.
Is there an easement of some sort?
No.
I'll wait till it's.
Well, I mean, that's where I was going with it. If there's something that exists other than just the fact that there's a crossing, you know, let alone, you know, that is an issue. I saw the wall and the terrace and the retaining walls that appear to be on your property. Is that right, sir? I'm sorry.
On the north side?
Yeah, well, this, no, now I'm talking about the, on the, what would be the west side.
Yes, the patio goes over the property line.
Okay. I really, I don't have any other questions.
Megan.
Kind of a mess of a neighborhood, huh? I have a couple of questions, but I'm going to ask the first one about the driveways first while you're still up there. Well, I have a couple of questions. So I.
I may be able to help about the driveway question.
Sir, you cannot speak.
I'm the neighbor on the other side.
Sir, you cannot speak unless you have permission to go to the microphone. Thank you.
Well, I might invite him to the microphone.
Yeah, that's fine.
Can you come up to the microphone? Thanks. Just because I think you might answer my question before I even ask it.
And I hate to ask you to do this, but because we're on TV, we ask all folks to take off their hats. Thank you, sir. If you would identify yourself, please.
Yeah, my name is Ed McLaughlin. We live on the other side and have, for the last 40 years, owned 27 Clamshell Drive. The existing driveway that was, that you referred to, and there's some confusion about, is the way that we access our home and have been doing it for 40 years. Three years ago, when Ms. Al bought the house, she had a survey done, and we came back to find out that, one day when we came up, there was a stake in the middle of our front lawn, realizing that the actual property line ended in our front lawn. We had thought for 40 years that it ended at the beginning of the driveway and that there was a little tiny triangle that formed the problem. We used to kid the next-door neighbor, you know, who's going to mow it this year? But when we found out that that happened, I went over to Ms. Al and said that, you know, I think that we should have some type of easement. And she said, there's no need for that. You've been using this driveway for 40 years. Continue to use it in the same manner that you always have. It's not going to be a problem. So that's what we did. When we got the notice about these plans that she's making to enlarge the house, again, I contacted her and said that I think this might be a good time with all that's going on, that we addressed the question of the easement and that I'm going to take it to an attorney, which I did, and sent to her on April 5th, an easement agreement, and asked her to review it with her attorney. I have received no reply to that, and a follow-up letter is going from my attorney to her today or tomorrow, because I met with him yesterday.
Thank you. That does clear it up a little.
Okay. You did ask also when that road was paved. You'll remember that several, January, February ago, we had a flood in that area. Clamshell Drive was completely annihilated and the concrete all broken up. And the road, the neighbors got together, all the neighbors got together, chipped in and paid for the existing Clamshell Drive to be repaired. At the same time, the person that did the job asked the Al Properties, they were known by Higley, the former owner, and ourselves, that we would like our driveway updated because there's a.
So that's when it got updated?
There's a pole that's right next to that area that's accessed by all the electricity and Verizon trucks that come in there, and that was beat up pretty bad. So we, Higley and I also had the driveway. So that was done, I forget exactly what year it was, but it was that big floodstorm.
That's helpful, thank you.
You'll recall it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, Megan?
Uh, yes. I'll let that one sit in my head. What is, and I think you, we might be able to answer this, I just don't know off the top of my head, the ridge height of the other, of the one and a half-story properties in the area, do you know?
Which one?
So the Little Beach one, which is 20, yeah, 20-something?
46.
46, yeah. Not very good with numbers. But I, those two, I'm thinking of the two, and again.
Those that were just recently.
Yeah, that, those. And then I did have a question for Mr. Dunham. It's you, at one point you said the house was 25 or 8 feet, and at one point you said it was 35 feet. What's the final ridge height without said coupler?
So the final ridge height is, it's 35.3, but that's factoring in the adjacent grade of 6.0. So from street level or the slab height in the garage, the building is 29 feet. Does that make sense?
Oh, it makes sense. I just don't necessarily agree with that's how I would define it, but it does make sense. Okay, those are my questions. So if Sarah can, she can just answer me when she sees it.
Yeah, and.
You see where I'm going with that.
The flood that gentleman was talking about, the four nor'easters hit in March of 2018, so it would have been after that.
Yeah, so it was recent, very recent.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So Clamshell or?
46 Little Beach has ridge elevation of 37.5. This one is proposed to be 35.5 elevation, not, that's not building height, it's elevation. So both of them are just about 30 feet. Okay, thank you.
Paul.
I understand that you're going to reduce nonconformities by, in effect, removing what's trespassing on the neighbor's property. Is that, is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And is there any reason why you couldn't move the conditioners and generator to, under the deck that's going to be over the septic system?
So it has to be at elevation 14, so it's at the same height of that deck. It can't go underneath it. We would love to put it underneath it, but it has to be above flood. So it's at the same height as that deck.
So what you're saying is it's going to be at the 14-foot location where you're proposing it to go anyhow?
Correct.
And as I was at the property, it seemed to me that the elevated Title V septic system was already up at a fairly high level for where you are, from standing below that. All of this is going to end up being above, above that level?
Yes.
All right, I don't have any further questions.
Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McConnell, if you could.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, it seems like the height of the house is going to be within legal limits, under 30 feet.
Correct.
But is it really the placement of the house that's bothering you? Like, if they left it in the footprint it was in and it was 30 feet, would that be okay?
The placement is most important because as you move the whole situation back, as I said, it gets into our living space and our privacy. So yes, I understand the height limitations and how it needs to be done. My only comment on the height was that the three that you've approved that I can see from my house, all are story and a half. They may be 30 feet high.
Right.
But they're a story and a half with dormers, and it breaks up the walls. On this one, the walls are, there's going to be three stories of straight-up walls. The other ones, you've got the FEMA compliant foundation, then you've got a single story, then the roof with dormers. So this is just taller. Is that the end of the world for me? Probably not. The most important thing for me is, it seems that there is, that parking is not a compelling reason to move the house back six to eight feet, get it closer to the back lot line, increase every nonconformity there. Just doesn't seem to me that that is worth it. There is, if they left the house right where it is, there is space to park one car before you go in the garage. It is, if you look at the site plan that Mr. Clark did, the roadway is actually quite a ways from.
This is the pavement. This is the roadway. This is the roadblock.
So there is quite a bit of room there. But yes, my biggest concern is.
The placement.
Moving everything, the balcony, the air conditioner, and the house, six or eight feet closer to the lot line and more, in my view.
So if it was 30 feet where it was now, you would be okay with that?
Yeah, I don't see that I can complain. I think it's the design.
No, you can complain.
No, I can't complain about the 30 feet.
I think you can, because if it's more detrimental to the neighborhood, if a bunch of vistas. of vistas are blocked, then it could certainly be. Just because things are allowable by law doesn't mean that it's ideal.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Dave Heach.
I have no questions, Dave.
Okay. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Heach seconds.
Paul.
Votes yes.
Megan.
Megan votes yes.
Paul.
Paul votes yes.
Dave Heach?
Dave Heach votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, deliberations.
Mr. Chair. May I ask for a straw vote to save you some deliberations? Thank you very much.
So everyone's being asked that if you were going to vote right the second, would you yes or would you no? We'll start with Bill.
No.
Is your name Bill?
I'll be Buck.
You'll be Buck. Okay, I like this. This is good.
Does that mean I have to be Bill?
No. No.
If I were voting this, this proposal as it stands, I would be voting no.
Megan.
I would also be voting no.
Paul.
Yeah, I think I agree with most all the comments made by Mr. McConnell, so I would be voting no.
Randy.
No.
Dave Heach?
And I would be voting no. I guess they're not interested in hearing any of our reasoning as to why.
No.
Okay? No.
And I would vote no also. So that would be a unanimous straw vote. So would you like to-
Do you want to hear why?
Follow.
Please, yes, thank you.
So you want the deliberations?
No, he doesn't.
Well-
That's the question, that's-
Yeah, I think from what I've heard, a lot of your comments are going to reflect what the Obutters have had to say. I don't think it's, would be substantially different unless somebody, something else in this project sticks out like a sore thumb to you that wasn't mentioned yet.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
I just have a question about the pavers, which are in there. What do they lead to?
From the driveway to the stairs that go up to the first floor.
The-
The steppers.
The new driveway?
Yeah. No, the existing driveway.
So they keep in both driveways? We were right about the driveways then.
Yeah.
We're going to have two driveways?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all.
I think, there's another thing that needs to be clarified. I think in the, the planning board's letter talks about the southerly paved driveway being removed, is that correct?
No, but Donnie, he said it was being removed.
Dave, this is-
Dave, sorry.
This is Donnie on here. So the, yeah, so after the planning board meeting, that was the consideration to move, to remove it. So those steppers that go to that second driveway would also be removed, to answer your question, Megan. And there would be steppers just to go to the proposed, if that makes sense.
Okay, it does make sense, thank you.
Would you like to move to withdraw?
That's Donnie's decision.
I believe so. Yeah, yeah, we would.
Okay. And we'll make it without prejudice, okay? I'm not sure what that means, but withdraw without prejudice. Okay, any discussion about that?
I will move to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
Dave Heach seconds.
I'm Buck.
Okay.
So I had a question. What you said, is there any discussion?
Well, I did, but I probably didn't. So what's your question, Buck?
So are we, are we supposed to hold on to this stuff? They can come back with the same design, or they would have to come back with a whole new design?
Well, they'd be pretty dumb to come back with the same design.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Okay. Try it again, Paul.
I'll move to grant the request to withdraw without prejudice.
And I will second.
Okay, that needs a roll call vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Megan?
Megan votes yes.
Paul? Paul votes yes.
Dave Heach? Dave Heach votes yes.
And also vote yes, that's a unanimous vote. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, board.
Okay, Sarah, we are on to 22-033.
Application number 22-033, Eric and Teresa Peterson, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 45 Harding's Lane, also shown on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, 14C, Block 30, Lot 21. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. Also proposed is the removal of a portion of the existing nonconforming detached garage with living space. The existing dwelling is nonconforming and that it is located 19.4 feet from the southerly obutter. The existing garage is nonconforming and that it's located 10.8 feet from the southerly obutter and 16.2 feet from the easterly obutter. The proposed dwelling will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw. Proposed garage with living space will remain nonconforming, being located 10.8 feet from the southerly obutter where a 25-foot setback is required. The lot is nonconforming and that it contains 33,258 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5b of the bylaw.
So Mr. Riley, before you begin, you had a request that even though Conservation was unable to meet, to give us their wise counsel, that we proceed, because what Conservation was up to really has nothing to do with us. Did I mistake that?
No, that, the, I don't know how many of you had about an hour of your life to waste, but I watched the Conservation Commission meeting on April 13th.
I don't think we did. Anyway, they wrote, "The project was presented on April 13th and continued May 25th." So I think we need to settle the hash, do we want to go forward today and do what your request?
Well, I think the, the benefit of watching the video of that meeting establishes that none of the discussion, none, zero, zip, nada, dealt with the structures themselves. They dealt exclusively with the mitigation planting. And if Nikki Smith, our conservation agent, had not been on vacation this week, I'm pretty sure that the letter would have said, you know, and it can be permitted with conditions, but she's on vacation and Chris will just-
Well deserved, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
Okay.
Plus, plus she's got a baby at home too, so you know.
So let's, so we need to really settle that amongst ourselves, okay? Okay? So let's start with you, Buck. Are you willing to go forward based on what Mr. Riley says about Conservation?
I'm ready to express that, but first I'd like to say, the last case, we had a similar fumbled ball by Conservation where they said that they didn't want to do anything until we did something so that they didn't. And I got a little excited at that. So to answer your question, I'd just soon continue until Conservation, I'd just soon pass until Conservation sends us something in writing. I don't like, I do not like, and I object to letters saying, well, it'll probably be okay.
No, but you're punishing the applicant.
No, no, I'm talking about the last case.
Oh.
You didn't hear all that, I don't think, but nevertheless, they, they got to get their letters into us before, before we hear the case. That's my, and I'm saying that as somebody who sat on the other side of the fence for a while.
No, and that's traditionally been the way, way it was. And I think, but for the fact that Nikki's on vacation, she would have been in a position to send a letter like that, but it's-
And she is. Okay. So Bill, how do you feel about it?
I think if that's the issue, if it's a mitigation planning issue, I think we can go ahead and review this.
Hi.
I could go either way. I would say we could review it, probably.
Paul.
I agree, based on the representation, that it's only mitigation that is being dealt with and nothing that would affect what we're doing. And I think we can go ahead.
I would go along with what Buck said, because he was on that other board and he's a voter today, so I think it might be prudent to wait.
I, I think that I'm, I'm the same thoughts as, as Paul and others, and we can go ahead today, I would believe.
We can.
I think we, I think we can proceed based on-
Yeah, and I, I do too. I, I'm not concerned about the mitigation aspect and all that. And, you know, so what we would need to do is vote.
Well, I can address that.
Whether we proceed or not.
I agree too.
We know?
What do you say, Sarah?
I said I don't think you need to vote as to whether or not you need to proceed, because it has been advertised as being heard today.
Oh.
That was more of just a straw poll as to would the board like the applicant to continue.
All right, great, thank you. And to the extent if you have other questions, Dave Clark was the one who did the presenting at the Conservation Commission. So, I mean, I just sat through it, my brain's leaking out of my ears, but, you know. The, all right, so this is a situation where the Petersons, who I'm proud to say are fellow Providence College grads, and I'm wearing my Friar tie today.
I'm going to call you, you might not want to push that.
Well, they first looked at the, the property, which was formerly owned by my law colleague, Alice Popkin, with an eye towards just renovating it for their family. And as happens in most cases, you know, they met with an architect and ended up with a new house. It's funny how that happens. In any event, the, I think the design that they've come up with is attractive and that the, and they've reduced the size of the garage to move it further away from the wetland. The, and the design they have, if you have the, put the elevations up. Thank you. So as you can see, the, instead of doing, you know, a full two-story structure like the two buildings that, that front on State Harbor Road at the entrance to Harding's Lane, you know, it's a story and a half, or story and three-quarters, whatever it is, with dormers providing headroom and light into the second floor. The neighborhood has got some new homes, like the home immediately adjacent to us on the right-hand side, as you look at the property. And, you know, the buildings at the street up at State Harbor Road. And you've got some older homes that are one-story or story and a half. But I think that, you know, Roger really captured the neighborhood by keeping it a story and a half and a single structure with the use of dormers. The, they've taken the garage building, which is not attractive at all in its current configuration, and I think turned it into a much more attractive building. So I think that the, if I go through the criteria here, I think we can answer any questions you might have about, about the property. So adequacy of the size of the site, in terms of the size for the proposed use. And here, the, the lot's less than 40,000 square feet, so it's nonconforming, but the building is still 65 feet back from the street. The lot coverage, even with the oversized garage, is less than 10%, which is what's allowed on a lot of this size. The, and so the new house meets all the sideline setback requirements. The existing house has one corner that is less than 25 feet from the sideline, so we've, we've reduced that nonconformity. So I think that the, you could find that the size of the site's adequate in terms of the size of the proposed project. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties, the, again, we have the two homes at the entrance to the street on, on State Harbor Road. One's a square top, it's been there 20 years or so. It used to be Fred Powell's house, for those of you who knew Fred. And then you've got the new house on the other side of Harding's Lane from, from that house. And those are very substantial homes. And there are homes further down Harding's Lane, not visible from our location, that are also more substantial. The, so I think that this house fits in well with that mix of, of structures. Extender of the proposed increase in nonconforming nature of the structure or use, the, because we're expanding the living area, that's a sort of a nominal increase in nonconformity, because the court in Bransford said that expanding the living area on a house on a nonconforming lot is an intensification of the residential use, which is technically a nonconformity. But here, we're meeting all the, all the setbacks for the new structure. So we think that, you know, there's no increase in nonconformity and there's been a slight decrease in the nonconformity. Suitability of the site, including, we're not limited to impact on neighboring properties or on the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. As you can see from Dave Clark's plan, and if you've been to, and I know you've been to the site, the lot is very level, so we're not concerned about runoff. The, and to the extent, there is a vegetated wetland at the rear of the property, you know, the water conditions issued by the Conservation Commission is sure to require appropriate fencing, whether it's wattles or stray bit, straw bales or, or fencing, you know, that there won't be any sedimentation or runoff into that wetland. So I think you could find the site is suitable. Impact of scale, siding and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas and streetscapes. So there are no views and vistas here, where we, you know, clearly we have a streetscape. And I think because Roger's design keeps the building back 65 feet, more or less, from the street, and the, if you look at the front elevation again, you can see they have a, a covered porch over the front entry. And so the structure itself is set back approximately another 10 feet, eight or 10 feet. So the, the main mass of the structure is 75 feet back from the street. I think that, you know, so side, as we have in the, in the bylaw, scale, siding and mass, so the scale, I would suggest, is in keeping with the neighborhood. The siding, which keeps the house back from the street, reduces the impact of, of the mass of the structure on the streetscape. So you have an attractive building, not oversized, but with the, with the way the front covered porch breaks up the mass of the building and with the use of dormers, I think you could find that, you know, this structure, the scale, siding and mass, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. So compatibility of the use of the structure, it's, you know, it's a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood. Here we run, the property's on municipal sewer, so it's not an issue of a septic system. We don't think there'd be any impact on traffic flow and safety. And the noise and litter, we just don't, adequacy of utilities, we don't think is applicable here. So I think that you could find that with this design in this neighborhood, that this proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone either here or out there in Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate now.
There is no one that wishes to speak in favor of this application.
I'll read the correspondence. First of all, we have the note that I read before from Conservation. Crystal Keon wrote on May 12th. Project was presented April 13th, continued to May 25th. Then we have a note from Judith Giorgio, health agent, on 5/10. She writes, "I have reviewed the proposed plan to demolish and rebuild. The property is served by municipal sewer. The proposal will not add sewer flow. I have no concerns at this time." That's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone here or in Microsoft Teams who wishes to speak against this or has a specific question? If so, please indicate now you wish to speak.
There is no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
So we'll have questions from the board. Megan?
I have, I have no questions.
Paul?
Sarah, could you put up the elevation on the garage?
It's 5G and 6G.
Yeah, that's fine. For some reason, I'm having trouble wrapping my head around where the garage is. I see, I see the house front elevation. And as you look at that, is the door on the right-hand side at the, at the ground level, that goes into the garage?
Where, which, of the four images up there, which image are you talking about?
Top right. That's, that I see is the front of the.
Yeah, top, top right, yeah. Those doors, the front door goes into the garage area. You look at the, okay, so if you look at the floor plan, which is A2G. I think, maybe A3G, A3G. A3? Yeah, that's it. So you see, on the right-hand side, the two garage spaces and then the door, that would be the door that we were just talking about, Paul.
Which, which, which are we looking at here? Two? 2H? Or two?
Yeah, that's two, that's 2G. No, it's 3G. That is 3G.
All right. I'm getting there.
Not all.
Yeah, okay. So as you look at the house from the front, and you think about what's 3G, the, the door that's on the bottom of the house on the right-hand side from its front elevation is actually this door that goes into the garage below there.
Yeah, you keep mentioning the house. This is.
Well, I mean, it looks like, it looks like a house.
Oh, okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure we're talking about the same structure, that's all.
It's a guest, it's a guest house, right? It's not a guest house.
It is not a guest house. There's no stove in the building.
It's a garage with living space. It's referred to by the architect as a guest house.
Well, I know, but you know, he's a great architect and a lousy lawyer, so it's not a guest house. What happened was, when they, when they first drew the, when he first drew the plan, he had a stove in the upstairs section. And Ms. Clark alertly pointed out the fact that it was not a guest house. And so he redoed the plans, removing the stove. So this, it's a, we call it.
Puff, it's no longer a guest house.
Well, it's just, we call it guest quarters.
Paul, it's a garage with a gigantic bonus area.
Yeah, okay. Well, maybe you can see why I got confused, because.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, you know, I can, I can understand that.
I mean, it just didn't look like what it theoretically is.
So are you unconfused?
Yeah, I'm somewhat unconfused. I'm probably unconfused enough to screw things up, but hopefully I won't. There's been a lot of changes in that neighborhood.
Yes, there have been.
And.
Well, you get the building next door, which you guys approved a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
And then the big building up at the street, up at Stage Harbor Road.
Yes, it's related to someone else who's involved in the business, huh? Okay, I have no further questions.
Randy?
I have no questions.
Dave Veach?
I have no questions, Dave.
Buck?
I have no questions, but I have one comment. On the tax assessor sheet that was attached in this packet, it looks like your clients, the Petersons, are from Virginia Beach, Virginia. That's what it looks like. I don't, maybe, but maybe you're not aware of that.
On the assessor.
Anyways, the only comment was, their neighbors to the west are also from Virginia, and they moved in 10, 15 years ago.
Is that Dow?
Yes, John's and Carol. And they thought that their land was their land, and they planted in their backyard some rhododendrons.
Heaven forbid.
To the tune of, I believe, $40,000 penalty fees from the Conservation Commission. So I would strongly suggest you remind your clients that that's sacred land in the 0 to 50. Just help them save some money. I know it's a different Conservation Commission, but they.
No, they, they, turns out that a prior owner, I think this was like a secret wetland that nobody knew about, so a prior owner had actually removed some trees on this property. And the, and that was addressed, Dave Clark was at the meeting. They want you. Oh, no, never mind.
No, 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 no.
Anyway, so that was.
No, I'm off base, I'm sorry.
No, it's a nice discussion later on. Bill?
Not tonight. Can you just confirm for me the square footage of the existing home overall versus the square footage proposed? Because I don't see it anywhere. I see the coverage.
I would if the architect had put it on the plan, but he didn't.
It's not on there, which is odd.
And usually, usually town staff reminds me that they haven't put it on there. And so I get, then I get the information. Unfortunately, I was on vacation, I didn't get, I didn't get the message from town staff, which I'm sure was sent to me, and I just didn't see it. So, so the building is, the new building has substantially more area, because it's a full two-stores, basically, whereas the existing building is just one story. So it's a larger building.
So you would say it's possibly 2,300, which is the coverage of the house times two?
Yeah, probably less than that, but yeah.
Somewhere in there.
No more than that, for sure.
So it's a significantly larger home?
Yes, yep.
And?
But smaller than the, smaller than the adjacent building, immediately adjacent. That building was a pretty big building.
Is that 59?
To the right as you look at, I don't know the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you get any feedback from them at all, the neighbors, about this proposal?
No, I think they're happy to have a new building. The truth matches theirs.
That's all I had.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
I'll second.
Need a vote, Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Megan?
Megan votes yes.
Paul votes yes.
Dave?
Dave Veach.
I vote yes. Deliberations. Paul?
I think I've gotten my questions answered, so I have no further questions. And I will say that my thoughts are that it probably fits what's going on in that neighborhood at this point. And despite the fact that it looks like a guest house, it really isn't. So I'm sure it's, it's acceptable.
Randy?
I would say it meets the criteria, and I think you did a good job going through the criteria. And I would accept it if I were voting, if I were voting, sorry.
Thank you. Some of us are hard of hearing, so.
I, it meets the criteria, and it's, it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It does fit in with some of what's been going on there, so I will support it.
Buck?
I second Mr. Veach's comments.
Bill?
I would also agree.
Megan?
I would support it as well.
So Sarah, can we call it whatever we want to call it?
In regards to what?
Well, whether it's a, it's a barn with a garage, or, you know, and all that kind of stuff. We never would want to use guest house.
It cannot become a guest house, guest house because they don't have the required land area.
Yeah, we don't have, yeah, we don't have the required land area.
You finish your comments? Is that right? Okay, I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I guess the question is, do we have any conditions that we need to add to that?
Buck, we had a terrible time with that house that was built as a corner with parking.
Very familiar with that.
And we had just a.
Which, which corner are you talking?
Both.
Right.
Both.
They don't understand that. This lot is much bigger. There should be absolutely no parking in the street. The Cummings property on the bend, away from Stage Harbor, had plenty of land, and there was no enforcement. And there was, at times, 11 trucks parked there.
Yeah.
And it was just horrible. But.
Yeah, I'd drive by and I'd say, oh my God. Okay. What else?
Well, so I guess, I guess you can comply with a requirement that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on site.
Right.
So there'd be no parking in the roadway.
That's correct.
And in terms of construction and when that's going to take place, do you have a concept as to what's in mind?
The, because of the way this project started, which was rear end two, the builder's been sitting there salivating, chopping it a bit. And they'd like to begin construction immediately, because the very first thing they did was disconnect the house. And it's been sitting there vacant for over a year now, so they would really like to get going. What I would suggest, again, because of the size of the lot, is that, you know, the construction be limited during the summertime, from 8 o'clock to 5 o'clock, no work on weekends, but they should be allowed to work during the week.
So I believe the concern of some of the neighbors on the street is 59 is just finishing up. They should, the certificate of occupancy, I believe, has been issued. They have a pool and some landscaping, but they, those new owners might want to enjoy their new home this summer. And there's a house, it's kind of behind the corner of 270. 270 is the big white house that was just built, brother of eastward. Behind that, if you drive down Stage Harbor, you'll see a football field, a blue Tyvek, on what appears to be 12,000 square feet of roof. Now, that must have been a conforming lot, because we didn't hear that. Fleischman property was formerly, geez, Phyllis Shaw. And so the concern is, I believe they have, I don't know this, and I'm asking a question of the building community. Do they have a restriction on, you know, they didn't come before ZBA, but was it conditioned that they could work through the summer? Because if they are, that's a hell of a lot of nailing and, there's noise coming from that house all the time.
Well, if it didn't come before us, what would put restrictions on it?
Pardon?
If it, if it didn't come before us, what would put restrictions on when they can work on it, other than town ordinance?
Okay, so they're going to be building all summer. Based on that, maybe it's not fair, but I would be strongly opposed to letting them start their house before Labor Day.
I know, but what you're doing is putting a contractor out of business for four months, five months.
Megan?
It kills me, like literally kills me to agree with you, but I do agree with you because I think that it's, you penalize the people who are non-conforming. And in this particular case, like I can understand if you have a, like in the property we were just looking at, the tiny little streets down by, sorry, it's late.
Little beach.
Little beach. That would be a different situation, in my opinion. And while this is obviously a summer neighborhood, the lot is large enough, you should be able to contain it. And I somewhat agree that you're, A, penalizing the people who have to come before us, so they could have a neighbor building. And B, you know, from a contractor's perspective, not that it's our problem, but, you know, if we restrict everything, then, you know, they're not building in the summer, which is a challenge when you live in New England.
Well, I guess the positions are set as to what the issues are on each side. What you're suggesting, Bill, is that, is that the construction, they would like to start as soon as they can, but they're looking at, they got to wait 30 days or whatever from our decision. So you're already into June, and. So, and you've got to finish with conservation before you can start as well?
Well, we expect that the, they would issue their order of conditions at the first meeting in June, which is, what day? Yeah, June 7th. The appeal period expires in 10 days. You know, the, you know, they have demolition to do, demolition, demolish the existing house. Part of the, part of the planting plan, there's a large, I know this from sitting through the hearing, a large Norway spruce that has been damaged. And it's over on the Dow property side, the left-hand side. It's going to be removed, and they're going to remove that after they demolish the house, because that'll give them access to that area. There's demolition's going to occur on the back half of the garage with quarters. But again, these, you know.
They're going to be into the summer. They couldn't start anything until June 7th.
Right, that's true, but still, I mean, the, the, you know, I mean, what it does is it pushes them back, so, you know, they may not be able to get into this place and miss next summer. When the, and, you know, it, you know, it's not this.
Buck? So it's my understanding, Bill, that you're requesting to start construction and just keep on working right through the summer?
Right, but I'm suggesting that there'd be no work Monday to, they only work Monday to Friday. There'd be no work before 8 o'clock, and there'd be no work after 5 o'clock. So, you know, you know, they have their weekends, and they have their evenings, and they have mornings.
So you have, you would have a 40-hour work week on this site, going through June, July, August? So my question to the chair or to the commission, how often do we tolerate? And I don't know if the word tolerate's too strong. I need to soften that up, Sarah. So when you think of it, let me know. But how often does this board, we'll say, grant a deviance from what we almost always do? You don't get to build in the summer, I thought.
Well, you know, most of the time, Buck, what we do is don't allow outside construction, which is a big difference, but there's still hammers, nails, and all that other stuff. So that's what we usually do. In this case, there will be outside construction. But I don't know if that means more noise or less, but, so that's what we usually do.
Well, if I could comment. Well, if I could comment, you usually do it when the neighborhood is a tight neighborhood, as Megan pointed out, like down Little Beach, down off Milpon Road, down to South Chatham, Gillis Road, areas where the homes are all in close proximity. So here, you know, the building is 70 feet from the street and 70 feet from the neighbors. And the, not pretending there won't be noise, but it's, I would say, it's guys earning a living making noise. And the, I know, look at he rolls his eyes, okay, but still, you know, but this family has been, because of perhaps some poor guidance they received early on, has had this property sitting there for almost a year without being able to use it. So we'd really appreciate the ability to do work down the summer.
Okay, so Buck has brought up a point. So I think we need to, who agrees with Buck, who doesn't agree with Buck? Bill?
Well, I think you got, I mean, probably the loudest and the most intense part of the construction's going to take place right off the bat when they demolish the house. So if noise of neighbors is of a concern, it seems, on the other hand, there's enough room on the site to confine the vehicles there.
Just demolitions quick.
Well, yeah, but I'm torn about it. I would say it probably would be acceptable to let them get started.
And Megan, I think we know how you feel. Paul?
Yeah, I think I'm inclined to agree with the conditions that Bill has suggested in this instance, given the size of the lot and the ability to go forward.
Randy?
I think that, given the size of the neighborhood and the lot, that it would probably be okay, because you can keep everything on the site, so.
Dave?
Yeah, and in this instance, I think that the, I think it is important, the hours limitations that Bill has offered with respect to summer construction, that, to me, is a reasonable compromise of all the interests involved in this, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's the key word, it's a compromise, and it's not perfect for anybody, but it's better than nothing. Okay.
We certainly have been more aware of this issue since Megan has raised it, and also recently, we've been doing fewer and fewer restrictions, it seems to me, than what we were doing in the past. So I would move to approve the application as submitted with the provision that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on site or at neighboring properties with the permission of the property owner, and that between June 30th and Labor Day, no work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
I second that.
Okay, takes a roll call vote. Buck?
Well, I can't support it, and I won't vote no, so can I abstain?
Sure.
I'll take an abstention, please.
All right.
And that's only because of the conditions. I think that, I think Bill's presentation was good. I don't have a problem with Mr. Hoyt's design and everything else. It's going to be nice for the neighborhood, but I know it's not good to be listening to hammers in that neighborhood for two, maybe three years continuously.
Megan?
I vote yes.
Paul?
I'll vote yes.
I vote yes.
And I vote yes, that's a four to one vote. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you very much.
We're going to take a five-minute break, five-minute break.
Thank you.
Welcome back, everybody. Sarah, we're on to 22-034, please.
Application number 22-034, Gary and Melissa R. Steiner, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 81 Seaview Street, also shown in the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 15D Block 22, Lot 22B. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the constructions of additions and decks. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and it is located 7.1 feet from the eastern Lea butter and 14.9 feet from the western Lea butter, where a 15-foot setback is required. Proposed additions and deck will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration under the second except clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48. Such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 874 square feet, 10.3%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,197 square feet, 14.1%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and that it has 10.53 feet of frontage, where 100 feet is required, and contains 8,505 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R-20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5b of the protective bylaw.
Mr. Litchfield?
Good afternoon, and Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Litchfield here in behalf of Gary and Melissa Steiner, who I see are here with us electronically. They regret that they couldn't be here, but one reason that they couldn't is that their house is currently uninhabitable. You will recall back in January, we had a little bit of a power failure. Even though somebody checked their home for them, they found out thereafter that they had a flood, and they have a major disaster on their hands. Every surface is now down to the baseboards, and in fact, Melissa sent me a note, she wasn't sure how the electronics would work, but she asked that I read it to you in regard to that disaster. We've discussed trying to add on for quite a while, and this disaster made us realize it is now or never. As our last child leaves to go to college in Boston, we've been hoping to spend at least six months of the year in Chatham. They can't spend any time right now. They've enjoyed their house over the last 12 years, have never rented it out, and it's truly their home. We love our street and our neighbors. For us, Chatham is about the people and as much as it is about the place, and we merely want to add some space to make our lives easier as we age and be able to entertain our friends and neighbors as they have entertained us. We currently have a deck that seats only four people and a very small kitchen dining area. We would also like to have a first-floor laundry room that is currently in an unfinished area in the basement down a winding staircase. We're hoping that you will approve our modest plan to improve what we consider our forever home on the Cape. When we get to conditions, and I know I'm doing in the reverse order, the reason for, and Sarah knows that there's some impetus to this hearing, because I've been trying to get on the agenda as soon as possible, I would very much like to talk to you about not imposing a summertime limit, or at least a compromised version. But I will be brief, because it's been a long hearing already. You went out to the site, you understand that the Steiners have a home on a very much nonconforming lot, like virtually every lot on Seaview Street. Seaview Street's changed a lot since Charlie Pickard and Johnny Stallow and a bunch of fishermen lived there. But what the Steiners are proposing to do is not at all inconsistent with the history of Seaview Street, and it is very much different from much of what else has gone on Seaview Street. I think if you approve this, it's a very minor change. As shown there, they would like to add a conforming addition at the rear of the house, some 90 feet back from Seaview Street, not near any neighbors, and that's a segue into the criteria. The site is adequate for the current house, so we have existing lot size and sideline nonconformities, but we have a very low gross floor area and living area on a small and conforming footprint with coverage of only 10.3%. The site, I think, is adequate for the small 323-square-foot addition at the rear of the lot. It meets all bulk and dimensional requirements, but it does creatively provide important living area for the Steiner family as to compatibility of size. On the third sheet of the handout, as you will see, most all lots on Seaview are nonconforming. They were developed pre-zoning. Two of those, which do allegedly conform as to size, have been turned into condominiums of convenience with coverage ranging up to 27%. If you approve the special permit, it will remain a modest and site-appropriate home. Footprint complies at 14%. If you compare, again, to what else has gone on Seaview Street, this is far from massive. It's a modest addition at the rear end of the house, as Sarah has shown there. Step down, as is traditionally appropriate for Cape architecture as we go toward the rear. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, there are multiple nonconformities, as Sarah read. The extent is fairly easy. There is no increase in nonconformity. What we're proposing to do meets sideline setbacks on both sides of the house and is conforming as to coverage, as suitability of site. The neighborhood was developed for residential use centuries ago, we're well over 100 feet from Dukin's Pond, no conservation requirement, no filing requirement with conservation. As to scale, citing mass views and visitors, the scale and mass of the existing home are appropriate for the neighborhood, as is what the Steiners have had designed and proposed to do. It remains reasonable as to scale and mass. The change is again at the rear of the home. The neighbors have been consulted, they've reviewed, and they've approved. The chair will read a couple of letters from neighbors in an admittedly tight neighborhood. But I think what's proposed here by their architect and by Gary and Melissa is respectful of the surroundings and demonstrates a sense of place, which we don't always see. The other criteria are not really at issue. We're on town sewer. The chair will read a letter from the health agent indicating there's no change in flow. The other criteria, as I said, noise and litter adequacy of utilities are not present here. What is at issue is the standard question of whether the proposed changes are substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. Their relief sought, small additional coverage is minor and complies. We're not seeking any relief where numerous houses in the neighborhood exceed that, and in some cases are twice of what we will end up with if this is approved. It will remain compatible with surrounding properties. This is a Bransford, or more accurately, a Bjorkland hearing, because we meet all dimensional requirements. The judge, in that case, said the decision to require review of intensifications was to prevent McMansions. This is about as far from a McMansion as you could get. So in light of the criteria and the plans, I think that you can find the proposed changes are not substantially more detrimental. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in Microsoft teams who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate on the screen.
There is no one that wishes to speak in favor of this application.
I'll read the correspondence on 510. Judith Giorgio writes, "I have reviewed the proposed plan. The property is served by municipal sewer, will not add sewer flow, I have no concerns." Then we have an email, this is from Joseph Noons. He writes on May 5th, "We," right, so I presume he's speaking for his wife also, "we write to give our enthusiastic support. As occupants of the home closest to their 81 Seaview property, we've known on the Steiners for 12 years, and during that time have found them to be wonderful neighbors. Over the years, any modification that the Steiners have affected on their home or property has been done in a tasteful way, and most importantly, in keeping with the overall look of the neighborhood. This new proposal is certainly consistent with their usual approach. As they transition to spending more time in their Cape home, their modest expansion of living space makes perfect sense, and the architectural rendering suggests that not only will it fit in beautifully with the existing home, it'll also fit nicely into the limited space they have on the back of their lot." Then lastly, we have a note from Patrick and Ann Lee. They wrote on, well, we received it on April 26th. "We own the home at 48. Gary and Melissa Steiner have shared with us their plans for small addition. We have seen many changes on Seaview Street and are ready to support their application for special permit. We feel the addition is appropriate and will not be at all detrimental to our neighborhood. We hope the Board of Appeals will approve their request." So is there anyone in the Microsoft teams who wishes to speak either against this application or is a specific question? If so, indicate now on the screen, you wish to speak.
There is no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a question.
Okay, we have questions from the board. Randy?
I have no questions.
Dave?
I have no questions.
Buck?
No, one question. Who's the architect? Robert Torson from Omaha, Nebraska, not ordinarily found here.
Robert Torson from Omaha, Nebraska, not ordinarily found here. But I'm sure he'll open a satellite office if you'd like him to.
I thought I sentenced a out-of-towner.
Okay. Bill?
I have no questions.
Megan?
No questions.
Paul?
I have no questions.
And I have not, so Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Second.
We need a vote, Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Megan?
Megan votes yes.
Paul?
I'll vote yes.
Davee?
And I vote yes. Deliberations, Davee?
This is certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It meets our criteria. It's an improvement. It's a nice little addition to the house, a modest proposal, actually, in many respects. So I support it.
I'm delighted to see the coverage under 15 percent.
I'm delighted to see the coverage under 15 percent.
Thank you, Mr. Grau.
I think, I think one thing, that back drops off so swiftly. You know, they're gonna have to do something to protect that slope. You know, I just hope they take a look at that when they're doing it, but apart from that, it certainly is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and I would support it if I were voting.
Megan?
I tend to get super sad when roads like Seaview change dramatically, and this is such a nod to what it should look like that it makes me super happy.
Paul?
Yes, I agree. Mr. Nunes may not have been speaking for his wife, he may have been using the royal "we," which is certainly understandable. I'm sure his wife would probably think that was what he was using, right? But yeah, clearly, it meets our criteria.
I agree with everyone else. It meets the criteria, and it's not detrimental to the neighborhood.
All right. Paul?
I guess my question would be, you wanted to talk about conditions, Bill, what do you have? The, and Gary and Melissa, I, this is something I didn't address with you if I could, Mr. Chairman, because they are online. My understanding is that you would like to continue work ASAP because of the flood damage, and accordingly, if we had a limit like that in the last hearing, no weekend work during the summer, at 8:00 to 5:00 PM only during the weekday, that would allow the project to continue on as soon as possible. The Steiners have obviously a good relationship with their neighbors, and I think they will consult with them. Given that they've been waiting to do the renovations from the problem, it might be difficult economically and physically in scheduling to do one without the other. So I think frankly, they like, once they can get, once they can start, they want to continue.
I think under the circumstances, those conditions make sense. So I would move to approve the application on the condition that, can you contain construction activity and vehicles on site?
Or a neighbor?
We're gonna do our best to. There's certainly going to be occasions when, you know, somebody may have to park, the driveway, as you saw, is very small, and they share it with the Nunes who are supportive. But there may be an occasion where somebody's gonna have to park in Seaview Street to offload something. I can't, you know, it won't be a long-term thing, because the Chatham Police Department will prevent that.
Well, CBI, CBI has a very big lot.
That lot's completely full in the summer.
I think I'm not, I'm not inclined to impose that condition, given that, and I mean, you drive up Seaview Street nowadays, and all you see is trucks and, you know, every kind of vehicle. So I'm not gonna impose, suggest that. I would suggest that between June 30th and Labor Day, no construction on, no work permitted on weekends and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only. And I take it we don't need to do anything about exterior construction from your viewpoint.
Okay. Those would be the two conditions.
I second that.
Okay. Need a roll call vote, Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Megan?
Megan votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
I vote yes, that's a unanimous vote, thank you. Mr. Litchfield?
Thank you very much.
22-035, please, Sarah.
Application number 22-035. Keith and Linda Burkhauser, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 4 Homestead Lane East, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 16C Block 89, Lot 71. The applicant seeks to remove the existing stairway and install new platforms and elevated stairways as allowed by special permit under Section 4A 3A of the Protective Bylaw. The lot contains 23,079 square feet in the R-20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, and Section 8d 2b of the Protective Bylaw.
Mr. Litchfield?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Litchfield here in behalf of Keith and Linda Burkhauser. This is a permit sought to construct stairs in the Coastal Conservancy District, as shown there. There are stairs there right now. They've never been permitted. They did go in front of conservation a number of years ago when they were partially rebuilt, and no one ever referred them to the zoning Board of Appeals. The Burkhausers have owned the property for 10 or 12 years, maybe longer than that, I don't remember off the top of my head, frankly, it's late in the day. But if Sarah brings up the photographs, I will show her. We chose not to apply under nonconforming, but not only are these nonconforming as to zoning, they're nonconforming as to code and safety, as you saw when you went down there. So we applied for a, thank you, Sarah, we applied for a straight permit, special permit, a new special permit, for which the criteria are slightly different. That is not my shoe, but it does show that, and again, what you saw when you went down there, the stairs need some help. They also proposed to build some small, a small resting platform, because Keith's mother and mother-in-law are older than I am, and they would like to be able to walk down to the Mill Pond and get back up in the same day. So having, having a small resting area is useful. So going to the criteria, which is similar but not quite the same, as the adequacy of the site in terms of the size for proposed use. We have a 23,000-square-foot lot, which is completely adequate for the use, with pre-existing stairs there 30 feet away from the abutting lot line. We have 95 feet of frontage on Little Mill Pond. As to suitability of the site, the site is inherently water, inherently suitable for water-related use. Stairs are specifically acknowledged as allowable in conservancy districts with your approval. No impact on traffic flow and safety as to neighborhood visual character, including the views and vistas, there is minimal, if any, impact on visual character. This can't be seen from Homestead Lane, or from Mill Pond Road, or from the Town Landing. And again, the stairs have been there for decades, they're low to the ground, and there are neighboring properties at 62 Chase Street, 11 Mill Pond Lane, 64 Mill Pond Road that have similar structures. No water and sewer issues, no utility issues as to noise and litter. The octogenarian mother and mother-in-law have agreed not to use foul language and any loud voices on those stairs. So we appreciate that. As to compatibility of proposed use, excuse me, the use as accessory, an accessory residential use in a purely residential neighborhood, which has many water-related uses. As to impact on natural environment slopes, this has been fully and exhaustively reviewed by the Conservation Commission, which has approved it. The stairs have been, will be constructed with a 10-to-1 mitigation involving 5,200 square feet of plantings on the coastal bank and removal of lawn, and there is a letter to that effect from the Conservation Commission. So this special permit requires a finding by you that the use will not be detrimental of the established or future character use of the neighborhood, and that the use involved will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. I think on the facts, the circumstances in this location, that you can certainly make that finding. I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Microsoft Teams who wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate on the screen you wish to speak.
There is no one left in either Microsoft Teams or the audience.
There isn't? Okay. All right, we have, I'll read the correspondence. This is from Crystal Keon from Conservation, she's the Conservation Secretary. She wrote on May 12th, "This project was approved and issued an OOC." Then we have, this is an email from Ann Poppleton. She wrote on April 27th, "Good morning. I am the next-door neighbor to Keith and Linda. Their property has improved greatly ever since they punched, they punched, okay, their beloved home. I am in favor of the improvements. They are requesting to make a safer situation for all involved. They have become a wonderful addition to our special place. Thank you, Ann Poppleton, 39 Homestead Lane." Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against us or has a specific question?
There is no one in the audience.
Well, they could have showed up, just like that. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay.
I will move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Davee seconds.
Need a vote, Buck?
Votes yes.
Megan?
Megan votes yes.
Paul?
I'll vote yes.
I vote yes, okay. Buck?
Looks good to me.
Bill?
Same, those stairs are not safe.
Megan?
Looks good to me.
Paul?
Bill, I was recently in Provincetown and went up in the new funicular. Now, that's what they should be considering there, although maybe difficult getting it through conservation. Maybe mitigation of even more than that was ordered. But no, it's perfectly in compliance with our conditions and ordinance. I will vote to approve it.
If I were voting, I'd approve.
I thought maybe that the spacing on the stairs had been dictated by the Conservation Commission. Turns out that's not, that wasn't the case.
Sometime when it's appropriate. I've already been reminded by the chair, not now. I'll discuss that further.
But it certainly meets the criteria, and I will support it. Thanks.
I can't believe we need any conditions.
I don't think so. I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Second.
We need a vote, Buck?
Votes yes.
Megan?
Megan votes yes.
Paul?
I'll vote yes.
And I vote yes, that's a unanimous vote, thank you, Mr. Litchfield.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other business to come before, there's only Board of Appeals today?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
We need a roll call vote, Buck?
Votes yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Megan?
Megan votes yes.
Paul?
I'll vote yes.
Randy?
Randy votes yes.
Davee votes yes.
And I vote yes. We stand adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Litchfield.